Well, Paul, please.
Here, here, here.
Here. And now for the special election results to vacation and possible state mayor. File, please. So I'll need to do a review of this, so I need to say.
Chief, yes.
Or do you have to do?
I agree, I agree too.
I can choose to.
I got it.
Okay.
You want me?
I'll tell you, Jerry.
Yeah. Can you run it to you, I emerged in the house.
I, Joanne, here, follow me square, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the office of mayor in Fairfax as now hereafter required by law.
Okay. Sent to go? Okay. That's very good. Good evening. All right. So we'll be moving on to item five on the agenda. We will have a consent agenda, and before we speak, a motion to approve a consent agenda. There are a couple items to be noted. Number one, items seventeen and eighteen are being removed from regular agenda pending legal review for compliance with the employment employee personnel policy, chapter two, section two point two point six.
Are you kidding me?
No.
And is there any specific reason for laying this?
The items are being removed from the agenda, so there's no additional changes. Pending legal review, be sure everything is in compliance. That's not saying it won't come back from the next agenda, that's just saying. I'm assuming that the council wants to be sure that that yourself for possible vacation.
I do have one question, Jordan. Um, it's known that that, um, just quick question, so that gives in the future, um, there's T and murder networks for that, would that be against your?
Notice, no discussion on the side, it's removed from the agenda, the attorney will give us an opinion on what's going to happen, and I think I got that thing.
So if he, so he thinks that this, if these are against our, what our current policy is, we either can't move forward with this, or we would have to change our policy. Those are the two options.
Right, correct. So, noted, so. Okay, second item is that we're gonna make sure the council observes in correspondence House file seven eighteen, which will be effective July first, twenty twenty two. Even though we've had some times, probably ten, you shouldn't, we have some time, we start thinking about it, moving through budget process this year, and I would encourage anybody to learn as much as possible about how far that works, so that we can prepare for session, maybe an opportunity to be creative with some things. So that's also in the consent agenda. So with those two names in mind, I therefore seek approval of the revised consent agenda with the amended agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second motion, David, do I have a second? Possibly. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move on to the reports. I see the shirt back there by the door. Welcome.
Deputy, actually. We should, um, every time we get shirts off at the time of four eleven to twenty eight, you have seventy one calls service and hours to get that time period, that's a bit busy.
Does anyone have any questions from the deputy?
We have had a little bit of vandalism in the park, it's all, this too, it's genius, but it's having to keep them open.
Okay.
I do have a question. I noticed on the report that there's several chest pain, non-traumatic incidents. Is it like an epidemic, or are they all related, or do they say not?
Use the dispatch of overly familiar.
Handoff.
No, I know you can't mention any names or anything, but I just.
I know, it has nothing to do with.
No. It's just the classification of.
I meant that, pretty much.
Goes out.
Anything else? Okay. Good enough. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Library, Kathy Bain.
Kathy Bain, our ex-hub of library director. Things are going, we'll live library, we will start summer reading sign up on Monday, summer reading around June first through July thirty first. We also have, um, touch coming in June fifth to a virtual library, see how that works. Any questions for me?
I think I post that online, because we can just call my to the library out, that you can get to see, and then we'll have hotspots where you can click on and see more detail as to what we have possible.
Well, Kathy, I have one question. Will they feature like the employees? Can you use that opportunity to profile your employees at the same time?
I don't believe so.
Just the facility itself?
I think so. I'll find out.
Okay, be a good chance to introduce me, but thank you. Okay. Chief, Fire Department.
Council. Uh, Fire Department is running smooth. We are about ninety calls this year. We received our ISO rating for the insurance services toward the city ranking, and we are at a four, which one is the best. Uh, obviously, ten is the worst. So we are doing really well compared to all the other cities around here, we're doing really good. Our water department, that's on to them on the ISO rating, they scored a thirty eight, thirty three out of a possible forty, so everything that Kevin and the boys have been doing, that we have been preaching to the city about for years, we can't really get any higher in that department, so, good job, fellas. Uh, fireworks are ordered, guess we're still having USA days. Uh, any questions?
Mike, did that rating change, were we always a four?
Oh, no, when I took over, we were at about a seven, I think.
I think in two thousand and thirteen was the third time we got to a four rating, so that was huge.
We've been slowly going up over, that was one of the first things that I tried to do when I took over thirty years ago, was try to get our rating better than.
What would we have to do to get to a three?
You would have to.
A lot.
Yeah, you'd have to pretty much have full, full-time staff, or we'll station to have to be able to.
Hire a full-time fire chief, a full-time captain.
A fire. It seems like.
No. When they ask you, you can pretty much, that's about it. When my boys were sitting good, they're talking for, it's just time they'll call, we're sitting good, there's some room for improvement on training, um, the other room for improvement is really like having dispatch, um, they're doing the auto.
See, by, what you're supposed to do is you're supposed to have like four dispatchers to cover an area of what Lincoln County does, and on staff, full-time, and they have two, maybe three. So the big boys want you to have four dispatchers to cover the population area that we would have, so. It's really not a lot, really, we can do to get lower, and so.
There's a six-point difference to the next level.
And six points is a lot.
And, yeah, it's huge, and we're talking to them back and forth, and we might be able to get two more on that six, but we're still short.
So is that scale based on volunteer fire department, or just?
Everything.
Because it sounds like we would read that.
Actually.
You know, it's an unfair advantage, it's a disadvantage for not full-time fire department.
Which.
But, you know, that's the, so it's the insurance companies that set the rules. So that's how your house insurance, your homeowner's insurance is based off of your ISO rating, part of it. It probably, I would say in the time that I've been chief, uh, it probably saves homeowners a couple hundred to three hundred dollars a year on their homeowner insurance, I would guess. And we, and actually, all the work that we've done actually helps Gofford also, and helps people in the county, because realistically, in the county, without a fire ladder, you should be a ten, and we have two or six, so.
There's a lot of departments.
It helps out everybody in our whole fire. For Tom, I wish that it just go to water now, yeah?
Sounds good, night or two, they have a ten. So, it's pretty awesome, yeah, but we did some things to get to that level.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, but.
Makes me nervous, everything.
And you gotta try to stay there, that's the worst thing, once you get there, you don't just stay there.
No.
Five years later, they come down, say, you still worth this, and off you go again. Those guys did a good job.
There's great departments that have with signature.
Yes.
So. Very nice, nice job.
Anyone?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Building Department, please.
Oh, it's Ben. Chris Philip, Building Department, sorry I'm late, but planning and zoning and payload work on the top plan, that's just so much work, so, Tom, nice reading. Uh, I have a lot of changes here in town, uh, presidential's still really slow, you've got some finished basements, smaller things going on, there's a lot of commercial stuff still going, um, picking up what's Becky was just talking about there, you can see in the P and Z minutes, P and Z's gonna recommend the knock box that are required on all industrial properties, uh. They're still kind of kicking around the commercial stuff, I don't think they can fill that route, uh, but then multifamily with common entrance hallway, they're gonna require knock box, so your bigger apartment buildings, definitely step in their direction. That's really all I got, any questions?
Chris, there's a rumor that you may be spending more time in Fairfax than in Paylow?
No, that's not gonna happen, I am stepping down as the building, uh, official in Fairfax because they have, uh, HR Horton in town.
Or in Paylow.
Or in Paylow, sorry. It's not the two towns in your mind, a whole different set of staff and everything else, but anyhow, Horton's got just forty-five permits just on their own, not to mention the rest of the permits in town, so, I did go to Paylow and asked in, in Green Island County to handle that, they're gonna do that, but they asked me to stay on to be the zoning administrator, and continue coming up there every day, so, uh, they don't want to let me go. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Definitely learning this department, spring is definitely here, we're also, uh, in the last month or so, we got the cold flushing done through town, the boys, she's been in with her well, okay, they're getting pretty good in the team, we're getting it done pretty quick. Um, some of the work has started on Horizon, me as the city staff got the first cut in replace, so they're ready to come in and do the asphalt work, you're supposed to get back to me today and tell me changes, so I've heard that, so, you're supposed to do it within the next three, four weeks, so that's kind of up in the air, still waiting for year back. Community garden, Kevin and, um, some of the guys have been working on that, trying to get the, the water out there, and water's often used, so that's all running good. Um, the other thing's going on with electricity in the parks, some electrical lights, that just really started the last two days, we had the, was a pre-construction meeting one week ago, and it didn't sound like it was gonna be starting anytime soon, and then all of a sudden, they got some parts and they're getting, so it's going pretty good, everything the last couple days worked out well. Hartland Park, Hartland Blue Park, they started, they pulled in some equipment last few, and started breaking ground today, so, there's movement, it'll probably be an analog begin prior there, just, I think it should go pretty quick also. The new truck, that I serviced truck we ordered in December, February, something like that, we actually have a bin number four now, as of Monday, so, it's at least close, I don't know if we're gonna get it in this blended area, it didn't almost sound like if we got it, it would probably be the end of June, maybe first part of July, on delivery, but it's still in the up in the air. And then Kevin made such on the splash pad, we had a little glitch, he was gonna start it on Friday, turn it on, well, we go down today, little bit electrical problem, so, trying to figure that out, so we'll see what happens. Anything for me?
Yeah, the students in the water weeks, we have to excuse my call, I was sick four weeks ago, and this thing will not give up, you know, so. Anyway, um, the CCR report for the Water Department will be, it's, it's completed, my review's done, it's gonna be able to have, I won't tell her how many pages in hand or something, but, um, it'll be posted in the facts for June, uh, pretty extensive, like I normally do, a lot of information, um, can't take credit for all the, the rating on the ISO, uh, but a lot of our record keeping and the testing that we do in the system made a baby impact, that was a big part of that, but, you know, everybody else contributes in what council has approved for improvements and stuff, it really helps in the long run, so. Splash pad, there's a little panel view in front that displays all the electronics, what's happening, so you can program it, well, that went on the blink. The computer inside's still working, but I can't see anything to set the time and date to actually get it to function, so I called the company, we've got one on order, um, it runs in the hand, it, all the mechanics of the splash pad work, um, I just can't hit the button and make it work on auto, you know, so we'll see how fast we can move that.
John is actually doing some research on.
Yeah. That was that. They all see the love of the Nautilus, they sort of warranty with each of them, but there's no real date clause warranty, because that was kind of a bug in town.
Well, this isn't the Alm Bradley, uh, panel view, this is a Quintec panel view, it's an offering.
And yeah, but I think Alm Bradley, we wanted to, it's, yeah, so it's a different component is, yeah.
The only other problem with that is they got to program the panel view, so we gotta have, you know.
Yeah.
If you replace it, you still gotta have somebody coming to handle it, so, but, you know, we're working on that as fast as we can. Uh, we have, uh, uh, responded to a few water complaints in town, one we're working on right now is a rotten egg smell in their upper bathroom, in the two sinks, only two sinks, so, that basically, uh, sulfide bacteria, and that sulfide bacteria can live in somebody's home's pipes, in a certain pipe in the house, and that's where they get the rotten egg smell, because nowhere else in the house is there any smell, so we're gonna do some testing for that, send a few samples to the lab, confirm what it is, and all it takes is supercorinate their home system, and it should take care of the problem. Part of this is, the, um, DNR says the city Water Department is responsible for the water coming out of the person's tap, no matter what they do in their house, no matter what they add, we still are responsible for the quality coming out of that faucet, so, in turn, that's why we're gonna do some testing to verify what's going on, and help them out. We feel that's our responsibility, because utility can be that, so. Anything else for me?
Thank you, Ken.
Sergeant.
Carson, Ray, Joe.
Joe Kell, Carson Ray, uh, I think you probably got a chance to read over, uh, update, and Lynn has already touched on the vandalism in Cox Ridge and Federfield, and Kevin's touched on the mechanism splash pad that was really the only extra thing that I had, uh, any questions for me?
I got one, the people at Hartland Heights are probably really excited, they've been waiting a long time for that part, was there any kind of little groundbreaking ceremony, or did they just?
No, there was not.
Perfect.
No, there was not.
Here's the next.
Dave Neil.
Shane, where's the interview? It's kind of just one of her forks, I'm gonna land, I'll look for those. Any questions? Everyone?
Shane, I've got a couple questions that maybe between you and John could respond that, Shane, were in the report, but maybe just a little clarification. On the true string reconstruction project, it's labeled as on toll. Any updates on that, or?
No, the council showed that back.
I know it's postponed, but on toll to me means something different.
It postponed on toll, until council decides to move it forward, it's on.
And has any communication been made with the residents, the residents I talked to weren't aware, they were expecting it to start up this.
Yeah. That's something you want to see Cynthia, I'm sure can put together a letter to send out.
Okay. Yeah, a couple items on there about the Hartland Heights pond and pedestrian bridge, and then something called a rear wall.
Yep.
Can you expand on what all that is?
Rear wall is the outlet structure for the wet pond, and they started constructing that last fall, and we couldn't stop because of winter.
Is that right, when you first go on the curb there in Hartland?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot, you can't really see it along the street, yeah, it's not far to it, and they finished that up this, you know, pre-holics, that's what the rear wall is, and then Shane and Bruce want to get the pond finished up, so it's accepted with the city, so they've got some things, and they gotta get done with that, so, I assume it'll be, you know, a good portion of this construction season, get that to the point that the city can accept it.
Not just the pond itself?
And the surrounding, yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to establish a parcel and, and dedicate that property to the city, most of which will be that pond, or the adjacent water quality makes easier, I think.
Um, I didn't see the activity on the East Cemetery Road Bridge.
Well, I've been working with a couple of contractors for the bridge, getting close to, so hopefully in the June meeting, we'll have an agreement for the, the bridge design.
Has anything started on the possible acquisition or lining?
It's all tied together with federal funding, it's, that's in line, so.
Okay. Um, let's see, oh, just a follow-up question, I had a couple follow-ups, um, Shane, probably you can answer this, on the NOAH electric, were they able to get all of the signatures of the surrounding property owners in order to do what was written?
Probably Chris. Uh, I know they did talk to, uh, Vance Storage, Captain, assigned, that's the one I know for sure that they have signed, and Jeff was working on that, that he's the one that told me he got it, uh, finally decided, Shane himself was gonna talk to, I mean, I think he's talking to him.
I talked to Steve here, Sunday, at the games, it sounded like we got all of them set, so it's yours, so, we're waiting for that.
Speaking of.
Military stuffs.
Speaking of Tom, Mark, what's the status of what the council recommended at the last meeting?
You planned it over the top of your, we're gonna first.
You planned it over?
Get any pro?
He's gotta wait.
So I reached out to him, and I didn't hear back from him this last time, so I asked Cynthia just to nail the agreement that he, that he shared for him to me, and then see if he responds back.
I'm just passionate that the NOAH electric project and the art agreement are done.
Right, I just was commenting on the engineering report?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay. About Cardinal Drive, can you bring that one up? Not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda, it's not mentioned before.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, you were asking about, I think you said East Cemetery Road Bridge, I think you meant West Cemetery Road Bridge, or, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Wicks, so, the DOT, why would they have anything to do with the acquisition of the property, when it's Fairfax, it's, it'll be their bridge?
They know there's certain processes that the city has to follow, and they put acquisitions.
Okay, so, and what are those?
That's really not as important.
It doesn't matter, I'm asking a question.
No, actually, it does matter, it's not.
It does matter, it matters to me, Mr. Daly.
The, I'm deciding to hold off on the park's director's assistance, so, no, I don't think that's something we should be addressing at this time.
About the acquisition of property?
That's correct.
It was brought up, it was brought up just a moment ago by the mayor, so.
Yes, incorrectly, so anyway, I suggest.
Incorrectly it was?
Yeah.
So it's not on the agenda, so, um, kind of one of those gray areas as to whether you can ask questions, or, so, um, so June you'll have more information, Shane?
I hope you, yes.
And, the, so that is, will be on the agenda, is there any opportunity, we have a special meeting in a couple of weeks to?
I don't think, I don't think I'll have a agreement, but the council will consider them.
Okay.
Is that something that I can put on the agenda, ask?
Good ask, good ask, before the next, the special meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that's signing, discussion of council motion concerning the Fairfax lines called five K runs slash walk.
Hello, I'm all my representative of Fairfax Lines Club, for the last eight years, other than to COVID year, at USA Day, we want to the five K race, start right here with the cul-de-sac, and this year, we're going to run the routes in reverse of what we've done last year, head out to cemetery, head down, and take the path over to the bridge, over the creek, then we do one block on the other side, do the railroad track, we don't wanna do anymore and get caught by a train, then we, uh, come back, head on up Cemetery to Highland, and immediately turn on the bluff, get to Second Street, and we go downhill, Ridge View, and then back to the, some, uh, back to the cul-de-sac is the start and finish line. We always try to have a few people at the main intersections, uh, fortunately, there's not a lot of traffic at that time, but we have a, we always have someone down at the highway and cemetery, just, um, obviously, on Cemetery, there can be some traffic. Uh, each year, we ask permission to run on the roads, uh, we do mark with temporary spray, uh, which still washed off, but it rained last year, we had a lot of rain right before the race, so, uh, it was all washed off, uh, but we don't use any temporary markings. Just wanted to make sure we have permission to run on the brakes.
Any questions, Paul? Do I have a motion to?
Motion for second.
There you go, here's your second, all in favor?
All right, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Paul.
All right, thank you, and any of you feel like running a five K, we'll see you later. All right, thank you. And any of you feel like running a five K, we'll see you later.
All right, moving on to item number eight. Public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment number three. So if you're gonna open the public hearing, Cynthia, did we receive any comments?
We have none.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions about the budget amendment number three?
I just have to remind everybody, it's just that one step, you put on the new amendment. And it's just, and it's.
Anything else? Close the public hearing. And move on to number nine. Consider the resolution to approve that budget amendment number three.
Motion.
Second.
Small call starting with Wayne, right? Please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Number ten, consider resolution to transfer funds for debt. Cynthia, you want to talk about this?
This is just the regular, um, transfer for the June first payments. On June first, cities pay, um, principal, interest and fees. And so, um, this following the same transfer resolution we've used since it's up in here. Um, shows each debt issue, um, where the money's coming from, which fund, how much. And then at the end, it's a recap of how much is going from what fund to what fund. And then uh, it even, I like to list all of our debt payments. They don't need a transfer. So you can see there are the two that are coming right out of the water debt service fund, so that serves for a total of payments of one million seven fifty-nine-five.
Any discussion?
We'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Little calls during the hearing.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, should we drop? A lot of resolutions tonight. Number eleven, resolution, this is a one. Authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in connection with the issuance of a general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty-two-three and setting the date for the sale of the bonds. Cynthia, can you talk a little bit about that?
So, uh, we sell our bonds on the open bond market and when they're over a million, you almost always have which is information about the town to the people who might be interested in video. So I don't know if you read through it, but hopefully you did. Uh, but it gives in general information about the city or location. Well, um, how we run the city, uh, the current debt. And, um, so this is accepting this and then setting the, um, sell the bonds later this month when that's what the special is. In two weeks from now is for the final bond action. Um, Maggie will have electronic bond sale that day and then face for recognition.
Any questions for Cynthia? Not entertaining the motion about this resolution?
No. Second.
Little calls during the meeting, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Number twelve, another regulation to approve change order number one, amount from electric for the park's lighting project in the amount of eight thousand two million. Which that's quite a job.
So is it, this is just that push a change order, prescription of power lights on the Cox Ridge that we discussed a while back? Just to get it on the books. Um, at that time, they estimated to be roughly a thousand dollars change. So at least eighty-three hundred, you know, being a front price.
And John, this is changing the back of the council on.
Yeah, back to the original, original specification. It's an ultimate product that got accepted very big.
Any questions for John? Not entertaining motion for true.
Second.
Little call starting with Mary, please.
Aye, aye.
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 Thank you. Number thirteen, another regulations, time of engineering services agreements for the construction, engineering services for maintenance and painting of the elevated water storage tank project. Shane, can you talk?
Yeah, so we, uh, the city entered into a new home engineers and Dixon Engineering as a consultant on the hall for the engineering side of it. We put it out, Dixon put together the specs, we put out public bids, you know, do the bids here last month. We had good bids on them. So now this is the follow-up. This is the engineering, construction engineering services agreement for the observation and the, uh, repair of the NCP and the other days for Shane.
So Shane, are there two engineering services going on at the same time? Paul and Paul?
No. Most, most of the time we, we have most projects you have the design engineering, which is putting together the pyramids stacks, rent for bids. And then you have the construction engineering during the construction phase. A lot of times we do that, we remind, we Dixon likes to do it, so that's how we handle this one. And that was discussed back when we did the provisional design engineering agreement with this. These particular five, so.
One of the reasons I asked that, I see this agreement is an amount of eighty-two thousand four hundred. And the construction, um, did he in three, forty-three, five? Typically, we're expecting a ten percent engineering services fee and this is a twenty-four percent. Why would that be?
They, the construction engineering observation of this pretty intense. Um, we have an outside consultant that's gonna be in town. We're here, we know how to work. That's probably the big reason. The, the overall project is, I think, the city had on five hundred sixty thousand budgeted. The overall project that was questioning engineering is an eighty thousand below the painting numbers.
Anyone else have any questions? Chris, in? Not entertaining motions without this resolution for engineering services.
Motion, second.
Little calls during the meeting, please.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, number fourteen, another resolution to approve amendment number one to the development agreement for lot two, A and B, first addition to Fairfax. Looks like we need some details on that.
So this is the issue that came council three months ago, I'm gonna say. I don't remember the exact.
Please.
ATS, yeah, ATS, right down here off the Creekside Drive and Eightieth Street. They have, uh, it was like an L-shaped lot. ATS is on the southeast corner. Global Automotive is on the north corner. And they were having some, I guess, differences on access and so on and so forth. And, and then came up Global Automotive. Complaining about them having trees and drainage, then on the back of the lot, which they do. So I think the council directed them that to remove the trees or have an engineer, hire an engineer to certify that the trees are not impacting. They hired a storm on a fuzzy, put together this, uh, inundation letter that indicates that the trees do not impact the drainage from a hundred years from then. And, uh, with that, they wanted to amend the development agreement to allow those trees. And there's a mechanical facility on the backside of the building that also approached into the drainage. So it would allow those, those trees and the facilities to approach in that. And just, just so everybody's aware, you know, the city controls the drainage portion of it, but it's also utility easement. It's a point of drainage, utility, which the city doesn't control either. So, I mean, a utility company comes back there and wants to disturb that, disturb their trees. This amendment doesn't impact, you know, what or how the utility or on that, those trees in that easement. This is just a drainage.
So both sides have satisfied with the amendments of the development agreement. I mean, there's no impact.
Both sides.
As in?
Global Automotive. I never submitted it to global. I didn't see their feedback.
I didn't know we needed their feedback at all after we get the reports for some effect.
You need a token.
We haven't reached out from the poll.
Kind of saying, rolling that, just what they went, did what this part of the.
They don't.
I think they said, you know, further action will be taken.
Yeah.
This goes back to hindsight's twenty-twenty, but subdivided.
Yeah, this is.
Can you just ingress, egress, uh, easement situation that, uh, and you'll hear us say this. Wait. This is a recommendation for the Florida show. Yeah. So way back when, just from my memory, one owner of the property and then he sold it and wasn't subdivided, which is hard.
I think it was subdivided by him and he owned more.
There's two buildings on the lot. And then I think ATS wanted to own their section. Global owned it and then Global subdivided it. But then Global sold it, so I don't think it was. When they subdivided it, I think it was a different.
Yeah.
So the current owner of Global was not the person that was subdivided. So there are some differences on, because there is an access. You can get through ATS's lot to access Global's and they wanted to dedicate it. I mean, that's a separate issue that they may leave with the range of trees. I mean, looking at it, they probably specifically did that drainage easement. It's showing this twenty foot. That rest of the ten for that easement is way up high. It really didn't need to be there. It was just, you know, the engineer surveyor at the time they did that platform back when they already developed, it threw a twenty-foot drainage easement out there. That's over the. And then you also have commercial backing up to residential. So those trees act as a buffer to backyard of those duplexes to the commercial. So, I mean, it serves the purpose to have those trees as well. Um, you know, from a buffer shooting point. So I think everybody kind of wanted to see those trees stay, but obviously they're impacting drainage. That's what I thought. But based on trade report, it doesn't impact under near design fault, which is the city standards.
It's really the same trees there should really.
Chris, are you okay with all this?
Yeah, I like the way this turned out. I really did. Need to discuss. I was, I was sorry.
Does the council want to consider this resolution or do they want to wait till Chris talks?
I would move it forward. I don't think there's a requirement of talking with him.
She has the motion?
That is in motion.
No, second.
All right.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you. All right, number fifteen, close West of Big Rock, the cherry road. A.
I don't think they made it. He was up sure he was, he made it. Or see him. Uh, the person's very normal. They took the steel, thirteen thousand P's, you'd have every year. But as we program this year, the, the road's actually, weather's better. So we've kind of leaned for that. So we're not doing those many streets this year. Um, hoping to save some of the money that we have in that budget line. So maybe we can repair some of the concrete stuff that we have all further. So it's all the blessing of the statistics. Um, and for Church Street, uh, the highway all the way down, it's a two-way toll, Church Street private out of the budget. I put that in the one this year and hopefully it'll last us a couple of years with that Church Street back into the, the game. We redo it. Well, in other ways, you know, the other big one was D seven thirty road. We went on that for a few years and then we have some, few spots here that we'll touch on.
You have optional for the, the alley basically.
The, okay. Those two are about the alley. So they all like to travel and they like, okay, nuisance, they're not really heavy. Um, when we go to town, we try not to hurt the town as much as we should. So what we do is lift up the lane or if it's a dusty, snow, a little bit of snow, we should let it go. Let the traffic take care of it. So I figured with a little bit more room, this might be a good year to possibly chip the alleys. So, so I threw that in there and that, I guess, I wanted to bring that actually you guys see me, but was a good idea.
But the condition of the road right now is not such that any repairs are needed.
They did build on the alleys.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, they will be a little bit of rockwork, a little bit skid lower work and that part will come out of the city. So I'm not, um, we won't build the signs. Yeah. So we're trying to work in the other on that, but then we'll be future. So it's still gonna be pretty minimal what we do for the alley, but it shouldn't be a lot nicer for the residents. Especially like, um, go up to water. Works in businesses. That section gets grilled quite a bit, but then the rest of the alley is pretty rare.
Well, can you do those that should probably last a long time?
I think it lasts because it's.
Trap.
That's what I'm hoping. Well, the other end side of that taking process, you know, down by the, uh, grounds, build senior homes. We do that probably every three to five years for that out, a little portion of that out. It gets maybe a little bit heavier traffic or that just beat up more with style. And then, then it's so narrow, you can't turn around when you get in there. You drive in, back out. It's a mile or whatever it takes. And all from the beginning. So it takes a little bit of beating. Those two dozen boys. But it's usually every three to five years.
So your recommendation would be for, for the alley?
I would like to do both.
Your recommendations?
I would like to do both. Well, I had it so great that just in case, I wasn't sure how the money would play out. I think for money wise, from all the years being here, I think it would be here. It fits. So that was kind of my add-on. Like it was make sure you missed the. And down by, uh, Ricks, down with that and every time we pop, it's a crap. Just nuisance nightmare, easement.
Where is this one?
Down by Ricks, uh, what's the last?
Rattle Street.
Yeah, Rattle Street.
Rattle Street for me?
Yeah. But.
That's very interesting.
Yeah.
Other end.
First seven, so seven, it's the last day.
Pretty particular about his draft.
Yeah. So every time we do, I would call this, I remember it's always take each. Take some of that away.
Okay, what would the council like to do? Motion for all of it, motion for parliament.
So based on Lynn's recommendation, two optionals. He's the expert. Seems like it's needed. This is a good time to do the I motion for, um, number ninety as a trade.
There were two very.
And then he's.
He appears as much.
I think it's a total of sixty-three, three, six.
Yeah, sixty-six.
But there's no optional. I want to take all spots where we break out the. Pounds.
Yeah, so you mentioned, it's not a new, I was surprised at that.
And it's intermittent barring and it's low use.
I agree. Lose the expert, go with one hundred ones.
So that was a motion on the second? So that was a motion on the second?
Sure.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, another resolution, Mike, we. The USA Day's fireworks line, can you, do you have information?
Normal permit we do every year, if we require anybody to choose fireworks in town, ask the league, we have. This is our normal permit, we're gonna say this.
Okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, so we can, we'll pick the.
You?
Alright, so, please show a motion, second?
Second.
Anyway, um, resolutions are all called, starting with Wayne right, please?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. So seventeen and eighteen are off the agenda, so move on to nineteen. Actions officially appoint the mayor quotes him. You still for it, Marion?
Sure.
Well, hopefully you don't have to do anything. She doesn't have to read anything, does she?
No, her sister played with white, didn't she?
Okay. She accepts. Alright. Number twenty, resolution to authorize official signers on the bank.
This is setting up the mayor, mayor hotel, myself, Tina and Stacy, and the other two can sign checks. Sign the files, thank you.
Any questions, Chris and Cynthia? Motion to the now for.
Motion.
Second, please?
Second.
Roll call starting with Tommy.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Alright, planes reports, any questions, Chris and Cynthia on the planes report? Okay, Mary Ann, motion to approve the place?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. For two, this is not on the agenda, anybody? Bart.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor, thank you. I appreciate all the sacrifices you've made for our community. And I can just tell you from the bottom of my heart, walking through the doors tonight. I didn't feel sick to my stomach because I actually felt like there's transparency coming. And that is a big deal in city policy. And so I appreciate everything that you've done before and I look forward to what you've planned to do and take care of our town. And, uh, thank you for your sacrifice, because I think it's been in the memoir. Appreciate you, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Now we move on to Mayor's comments. First of all, I would like to publicly thank Mary Ann for her excellent bill of duty service during this. Year round period of time, and I'm glad to be on this, we are quoting. Also like to publicly thank the city's staff for their patience during this interim time and just conducting business as usual. That's very, we appreciate it. I consider it an honor to serve the community in this capacity and I really look forward to working with this council and call city staff, succeed. Thank you. So if you have any.
I'm just two things, um, out of the county border and Tina will be at a conference, um, next week, pardon me.
Should remind us of the special meeting day, please?
What?
The special meeting day.
Oh, it's two weeks from today.
I will not be here, just for.
About the twenty-third, so April, so twenty. Okay, late on Thursday. Well, so, yeah, sure. For the agenda, yeah, uh. As far as I know, it's just a bond action.
Now Tina, also for the hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
All good?
Aye.
Right, we don't have any.